Please rise as we do the National Anthem. Thank you.
Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all of us command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise. The true north, strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada. We stand on guard for thee. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
And as we do at every council meeting, I am doing the land acknowledgement. And with that, the city respectively acknowledges the Beaver, Cree, Dene, and Métis people as the original caretakers of these lands and the surrounding areas. We are grateful to live, learn, work, and play on Treaty 8 territory within Turtle Island and acknowledge these lands have been home to the diverse and sovereign First Nations and Inuit nations since time immemorial. And thank you. And we will just continue on with the adoption of the previous meeting. Go ahead, Mr. councillor O'Connor.
I'd like to move that council adopt the minutes of City Council organizational meeting, October sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, as presented.
That motion's in order. Go ahead and vote.
Councillor Bosch in favor.
And that carried unanimously. And we'll move on to the city organizational meeting.
Council meeting.
The city council meeting, sorry.
I'm ready.
Yep, go ahead.
I'd like to move that council adopt the minutes of the city council meeting held October sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, as presented.
And that motion is ordered as well, is in order. Go ahead and vote.
Councillor Bosch in favor.
Great, thank you. And that also carries unanimously. We'll move on to the adoption of the agenda. Ms. Gladys Blackmore.
I move that council approve the adoption of the agenda.
Thank you. And that, that's good to go, so. Okay, we've got the addition of seven point one.
As amended.
Thank you. A lot of buttons and screens to look at up here. All right, and that carries unanimous as well. All right, we have one delegation. And as we normally do, we have five minutes dedicated to delegations. And the first one up is six point one, Troy Johnson, and you're the only one tonight. Thank you. Yeah, just come to the table, and I guess you gotta say your name. And once again, you've got five minutes. And the speaker will come on. Yes, you are, go ahead.
Can you hear me okay, just right there like that?
Yep.
All right. It's my fiftieth birthday today, so I'm gonna be quick. Don't, don't wanna be here right now, but. Um, my name's Troy Johnson. I'm just gonna take these off. You're a little bit blurry, but it's easier for me to look at this.
There you go.
Um, uh, this is, uh, I came to talk to you guys today just in regards to a event that happened a month ago, a march for children in Grand Prairie that was attended by, uh, well, I was one of the organizers and worked security for it, dealt with the police officers and stuff, Islam Sikhs, Christians, people of different sexual orientations, as well as even one person that's detransitioning from a girl back to a man. This march, uh, there was a lot of stuff that flowed around. Nobody actually talked to us or seemed to look at the website, which I sent to everybody with my delegation form, was about parental rights on education, right? On parents having a choice on what their children learn at school. And we're talking young children here. Of that day, there were no hate on any signs or nothing. I made sure of that, by the way. There was nothing yelled at counter protesters. I believe a lady prayed for them, a couple Muslim ladies started to get a little upset, but, you know, I sent them on their way. The reason I'm here, actually, and I don't know, can I mention a particular name of a councillor or not? I'm not sure how the rules work. Okay, so a councillor made a post on Facebook about people being afraid, whatnot, not having a safe place to, to be in our city, et cetera, et cetera, which I really didn't understand because it wasn't about that at all. It never was, it never came out that way, it was not supposed to be that way. So I have a, an issue with that Facebook post. I have taken some, uh, some heat from people I don't even know. So has my wife, other members of our community have. Lucky for me, I'm a good communicator, and I've talked to people on both sides, and honestly, we're pretty much, most people are on the same page here, once they figure out that it's about parental rights and young children. So this post that was made by a council member, I just wanna bring up some things that I do believe, well, before that post was made, maybe people should've talked to people or anything. So your mission statement for the mayor and city council, within that mission statement, it says demonstrating fairness and equity. This post did not demonstrate fairness or equity. Now, I'm also gonna touch on your bylaw, C thirteen eighty-four, which governs the way city councils act. So Section four-ten, demonstrate fairness, accountability, and impartiality in all matters. Now, I'm going off the context that there was no hate involved. This was not an anti-sexual orientation protest or anything, it was parental rights and their children. Section four-nineteen states that if somebody makes a statement, they must demonstrate whether or not that's personal opinion or position of the council and mayor. So that needs to be known, and whether or not our council stands against parental rights for our children in schools. Section four-forty, all members of the public, you have to treat them with professionalism, courtesy, and respect. Nobody talked to us, so that didn't happen. Section C thirteen eighty-four A, these are amendments that were made. Now, Section four point four-four is treat all individuals in good faith and without bias, and shall not discriminate against any person on the basis of differences in personal opinions. We don't need to get into race, religion, creed, and all that stuff, but personal opinions. Section four-five-two, shall not make a statement when they know that statement is false. Now, I do not know if they knew that statement is false, but without the proper research or looking into something or talking to people, then it's just ignorance, I guess, I'm not sure. Section four-five-three, an intent to mislead the public, and I'll go back to four-five-two, not sure if that was the intent or not, because nobody talked. There, there is no, you know, fear or whatnot. I mean, there might be fear for people, but it's not coming from parents that are concerned about their children and what they're learning at schools. On a side note, in Grand Prairie, this is not happening yet, right? That procedures, uh, what do you call it, education, whatever, is not implemented in Grand Prairie. The demonstration was not about that, it was just to let our school boards know that we're not in favor of it, and if it's gonna happen, please talk to the parents.
So you're at the five-minute mark. All right, I'll give you a minute to wrap up.
Four-five-four, desecrate, uh, sorry. Caution to all material they post on social media and shall follow council policies and procedures. So that's just that, obviously, I don't believe a lot of these policies were followed when that post was made, and it has actually caused more division in this city when there shouldn't have been any in the first place. And that's it.
Great. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you. I didn't like reading through your bylaws this morning.
It's all good.
You guys have a good afternoon.
We'll deal with the delegation business at the end of the meeting.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, we're gonna move on to item seven, which is the reports, and so seven point one, public member appointments. And who is going to deal with that? Go ahead, councillor Berg.
Yeah, thank you, acting, or deputy mayor O'Toole. I would like to move the council appoint Adrian Temple, Aidan St Pierre, Adesha Goyal, Daisy Nellis, Hannah Ungstad, Janie Chamberlain, Manya Singh Hall, Abhil Malik, Peyton Wright, Raphael Malik, Tanvinder Rupana, and Tristan Paragast to the Youth Advisory Council to the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four term. And just speaking to this, uh, this is part of our engagement that we do through the city, and, and it's a great young group of people, and, and they represent the youth. It's a great diversity of schools, education systems, and just great people. So this is a, a group that speaks to council on concerns and what youth in the city would really love to see. So great to see so many wonderful names on this list.
And that motion is in order, and I call for the vote. Just for the record, you're absolutely correct, there's some very good people on there. Uh, that motion carries unanimously, and thank you. We will move down to, what day is it? Item eight, community business, and we have eight point one, the Invest GP Committee.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor O'Toole. I would move that council adopt the minutes of the Invest GP Committee meeting held October twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three, as presented.
Thank you. That motion's in order. I will call for the vote. And that passes unanimously. We'll move down to item one, the telecom tower lease.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor O'Toole. I'm going to ask Chief Glavin to introduce this subject today.
Please, thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor O'Toole. So when administration brought forward the report for the telecommunications tower, it did not include a recommendation to have council approve the lease for the land. As per policy six-oh-two, all leases or licenses of city-owned land beyond five years need to have the approval of council. So today, we're recommending that council direct administration to negotiate and execute a lease with the telecom company with terms and conditions satisfactory to the city solicitor and city manager. Typically, these are terms of twenty years, just for council's information.
So I'd be happy to make that motion, which, again, is to council direct administration to negotiate and execute a lease with the telecom company with terms and conditions satisfactory to the city solicitor and the city manager. You will recall at a committee meeting, we did approve the location, or sent the approval of location to council. This is to clean up that motion a little bit, as it was not quite in order.
Thank you. At this point, that motion is in order. I will ask if there's any questions regarding this motion. Seeing none, believe it or not. Oh, you got one? Go ahead, councillor Thiessen.
Yeah, thank you very much, Chair O'Toole. Just a question for administration in regards to the presentation. Normally, at committee meetings, I would receive a fairly, I guess, comprehensive package around the cellphone tower, the technologies, everything else there. This is more or less just a blueprint of where it's gonna lay out on the map. When Rogers filed their application, did they include any information on, I guess, the feasibility and the safety on putting cellphone towers near sports fields in the schools?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor O'Toole. I'm not aware of that specific part of the submission, if that was included or not. Ultimately, we're not the approving authority on the technology piece of that. I'm trying to remember the name of the federal government department that is. It used to be CRTC, I think they've changed their name now, but that is not a municipal function.
Okay, typically, do they send in any, anything around safety, around their technology and stuff like that with any of their submissions?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor O'Toole. I'd, I'd have to defer that potentially to Mr. Joe Johnson, if he would have any information on that. I'll give him a second to come on over.
I guess while we're waiting, just a little bit of background, it's, it's no secret that I'm not, I'm not in favor of putting another cellphone tower on one of our, our school field sites in such close proximity. Part of my concern's around the saturation levels of the RF and EMF fields that are created by the cellphone towers. And part of my concern is, it seems like a, a new practice for us to do this, and it seems like sports fields are the way to we go. And I wanna ensure that we're protecting the health and safety of our kids, not just today, but twenty years from now as well. And I think with technology, especially one that's changing as fast as this, we haven't been able to keep up with our bylaws to ensure that we're as knowledgeable or up to speed, our administration is knowledgeable and up to speed. So I'm just making sure and trying to ensure that we're taking every due precaution before we approve sites such as these.
Mr. Johnson, if you've got something, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair O'Toole. Could I get the question that was referred to me, please? I was looking for the.
Yeah, the, the most recent question was, do we typically request any kind of safety statements from our, our, I guess, the proponents of the development, such as Rogers in this case, or TELUS, or any cellphone tower communications? Do we typically get the safety standard guidelines and the proof that it's a safe technology where it's being placed?
Thank you. No, the, the part that we're, the process, the part of the process that the municipality is involved in is simply providing a letter of attestation of support of the location of the proposed cell tower. Telecommunication providers are required to adhere to Health Canada Safety Standards, and Innovation Science and Economic Development Canada is the approving authority on these, and they take care of all of the technology standards and requirements, and the city just is simply approving it in terms of if we support it or not. And to that extent, theoretically, the Innovation Science and Economic Development Canada could theoretically approve something without a municipal letter of support. We haven't seen that yet, but we're not ultimately the approving authority, they're just seeking our input.
Yeah, thank you for that.
Thank you. Councillor Pallott.
Thanks, Chair O'Toole. Just a question for me, was, was this proponent, were they looked at location, or was this more of a, hey, the city said this is an option for you? And I guess we're, I'm, I'm going with that, as I'm wondering if the city's identified other locations, and we gave them other options, is this the one that the proponent chose, or, or how that went for the, the selection of the site?
Through the chair, in this instance, the, the applicant proposed this location. We didn't seek out interest in this particular site. In the past, we have handled some inquiries and directed them somewhat, but in this particular case, this was a direct inquiry with a specific location in mind, and there was some discussion if this was the best location on the site, and, and it was determined that it was reasonable. So we brought it forward.
Okay, just if I can follow up. So I'm just curious, 'cause if I remember last term, we approved the one beside it, and at that time, it was, if I'm correct on one, I didn't go back to watch the video, but there was a huge gap in service delivery in that area, and we needed this tower to have service availability. I don't, I didn't hear anything about that, and I don't feel like that's the sentiment anymore. So I'm just wondering if, if, you know, we have another proponent? So I'm just wondering if we have another proponent today. If another one came in next week, can we literally line this football field with these? Like, I'm just curious, what would be the mechanism, I guess, if we said, hey, this doesn't make sense, other than, I guess, right now? Does it mean have any teeth to say, we only were going to allow so much in a proximity or so close together like we would with a billboard or other things where there's a proximity? Do you have anything that would stop this from being 15 of these in this area at some point? Or...
Through the chair, at this point, we do not. We have the only real guideline that we have in the land use bylaw in terms of evaluating these proposals is the six times the tower height and proximity to residential development. But with respect to clustering of towers, we don't have anything.
And thanks for that word. In principle, I don't mind this. What I'm concerned about is that we're going to set up with clustering in this area. One starts to two, and that could be to five. And one was okay for me. I'm struggling with two. But to think that there could be potentially more, and we don't have any bylaw that would preclude us from doing that, does concern me a little bit. But I guess that's a future conversation as well. Thanks.
Chief Glavin.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor O'Toole. Yeah, in the case of city-owned land, obviously, we have the ability to just say no. But on privately-owned land, so long as they're approved through Innovation Science and Economic Development Canada, we don't have the teeth to stop them from clustering.
If I could...
Go ahead.
If I could just add to that, Chair O'Toole. In certain instances where a site might be less sensitive, clustering may be a good thing because it's an opportunity to increase coverage without having any negative effects. So it might be, negative effects being aesthetically or any concerns one might have about health impacts and whatnot. But yeah, it might be tricky to create some direction around that because, like I said, there might be instances where clustering is a good thing because of the benefits for coverage. And you had also mentioned with the initial application, there was some concerns about coverage in the area. That's through a different provider. So this other provider has the same concerns about coverage.
Councilor Berg, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Deputy Mayor O'Toole. So at committee, Councilor Thiessen had flagged this. So I did a fair bit of reading. But one of the questions that I did have, and I didn't dig this deep, do you, and I think of this because, you know, in heavily populated large cities, there are cellphone towers on a number of office buildings and a number of apartment buildings in close proximity to each other. So does Health Canada place any restrictions on locations of cell towers that you're aware of?
Through the chair, I'm not aware of any. And with respect to other municipalities, we have done some research. And it appears that there's a lot of different approaches. There's some municipalities where there's cell towers immediately adjacent to residential. And my understanding with the change in cellphone technology is that with 5G, there's the potential that we're going to see more smaller towers. And so far, our municipality hasn't been hit with those requests. But if that's the case, it's my understanding is that the towers have smaller areas of coverage, better coverage within that area. But because it's a smaller area, they need to have more towers. And so the placement of towers in commercial and industrial areas to cover the residential is proving challenging. And so they're starting to look within like neighborhood commercial areas immediately adjacent to residential, school sites, playgrounds, parks, and the like. We haven't seen that yet. But I do anticipate that we will see that coming.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Johnson.
Very much. And anything? Councilor Thiessen, go ahead, please.
Thank you very much, Chairman O'Toole. Yeah, I was just making sure that our other council members had a chance to ask questions if they had any. I just go back to my original question. The first one that I asked is that, is administration aware of any cellphone tower placements near schools or sports fields across Alberta or across Canada that we can compare this to, besides the two that we have? One at the comp site and one at the Charles Spencer that exists right now?
Through the chair, no, I'm not.
Okay, thank you very much. And in light of changing technologies and in light of, as you just pointed out earlier, that there's more like smaller stand cellphone towers that potentially could be coming to a municipality near us, are policies currently designed to handle the approvals of that with the new technologies? Do the policies grasp like the technology and the deployment of them? And is it sufficient currently to meet the need of what is an ever-changing grid, let's call it?
Through the chair. Yes, our policies do provide adequate direction, which administration would provide in our report to committee in making your, for committee in making their decision for providing the letter of support or not. With respect to, does that policy address what may be a changing landscape in terms of the type of applications we're seeing? Yes, it does in that it requires six times the tower height from residential development. And so what I see potentially happening is the cellphone providers coming to the city with requests that simply cannot comply with that requirement. So because the catchment areas for the 5G towers will be so much smaller that they will be effectively forced into residential areas. We haven't seen those applications yet. But we've heard that it might be coming. And we did do some preliminary research into seeing what other municipalities are doing in response to that. And so far, we haven't seen anything that makes us think that our requirements aren't reasonable at this point. But there may be applications in the future where a provider may decide to pursue an application that doesn't meet that requirement. And then it'll be up to committee as to whether or not to provide the letter of support.
Thank you.
Thank you. See no other questions? So you have one? Go ahead, Ms. Gladys Blackmore.
Deputy Mayor O'Toole needs to learn to use his Q reader.
Well, that's way over there hidden.
My comment was, we do have a motion on the floor, and we have not voted on it yet. And I feel that the conversation was actually off-subject from that motion. Perhaps we want to call a question. And then if Counselor Thiessen wants to refer the matter of changes to our policies regarding cell towers, et cetera, maybe he wants to make a follow-up motion.
Fair enough, thank you. So I will call for the vote.
Yeah, no, I appreciate Counselor Blackmore's sentiment. Before we get to the vote here, I would like an opportunity to discuss and/or debate the merits of extending this lease here. It's good that we ask questions. And I thank administrations for doing their best to answer them. But based off of the merits of the question that's before us in the motion, I don't think we've adequately discussed or debated. We have asked questions. I do have some opinions and statements. And I would like to make a subsequent motion following this. But I would like the opportunity to discuss or debate the merits of this.
I will ask if there's any other questions.
So just to discuss the merits of this, I think council should strongly consider to not approve this lease and to not send forward the letter of attestation. For me, the technology is still too new. And there's still far too many unanswered questions that no salesperson selling us a cellphone tower is ever going to be able to answer on the long-term impacts and effects of cellphone tower RF radiation and the EMF fields that are generated by them. I personally find it that the idea of not only putting one tower near a school site or near a school field is wise, let alone clustering several of them. At this rate right now, we've got Rogers and Telus who are going to pull stakes in our fields right next to St. Joe's, right next to the school, right next to the field. We still have other cellphone tower companies like E-Sync and Bell who might want to stake in that. And unless we want to reconfigure the football field and, you know, use them for goalposts, I think we're well on our way to doing that. But we're also well on our way to not being able to say no, especially if they meet the space requirements. I know that our bylaws currently say that we have to have at least three times the distance between the cellphone tower heights between residential areas. I sent it with council this weekend, the International Association of Firefighter Standards on cellphone tower placement near fire halls and on fire halls, which they do not allow because of the unknown science that is still providing us unanswered questions to the long-term health implications of the technology. Now, if we're going to show these precautions around residential areas, I would like council to also consider that we have children who are very vulnerable and susceptible to several things that are housed in a school less than 200 meters away from where the cellphone tower is being proposed for eight hours a day. They might spend more time in their school than they actually do in their home. And we're going to say, we're going to prevent it from hitting your home, but we're going to hit you at school. There's lots of, there's a huge list of potential health side effects that obviously I can't prove because I'm not the expert. But there's lots of citizen science out there that shows that we should at least question the wisdom of clustering near schools and sport fields where one of the issues with RF radiation is heart arrhythmia. And when you have kids that are participating in high cardio sports such as rugby, soccer, and football, and now they've got two cellphone towers surrounding their field, maybe two more, maybe 12 more, until we actually address this or understand this or have a clear cut, this is the science, this is the safety, and this is coming from Health Canada, and this is understood. I want to take every single precaution that I can in protecting the health and well-being of our children. That is my statement. And I hope council will reconsider signing this letter of attestation and allowing the lease of this land. Thank you.
Was there any other questions? I see none. Call for the vote. That carries six to two. And with that, was there any other follow-ups that you wanted to make?
Yes, I would, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much. I would move that council direct administration to undertake a thorough review of our land use bylaw in regards to cellphone towers and placements and the restrictions that we may have, including any potential health hazards associated with the technology. Speaking to this motion, I know it's not a super clean motion. But I think it's fair, as the technology changes, that we haven't even looked at this bylaw specifically, given a good, hard look for at least a decade, for as long as I've been on council. So I think even though our administration knows that, that they feel that this will address any future cellphone tower placements and how we deal with those, I think it's extra important that we take a magnifying glass to this and update the policy and have a good, hard look at it through our planning and development department.
One comment for council consideration is what is in our responsibility and expertise? And I appreciate the land use certainly is within our realm. Just in setting expectations in a report coming back in health provisions that are outside of our responsibility and expertise, it's just something that administration would have to consider as we prepare this report.
Thank you for that, Mr. City Manager. Yeah, I hope that this will take as much time as possibly needed. So we have an understanding of this. And hopefully, you know, with the letters that we may send forward in the future to Health Canada and the CRTC or whoever's approving these on safety signals and guidelines, that we get the most up-to-date, comprehensive evaluation of the technology as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Counselor Blackmore and Counselor Bosch.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor O'Toole. I, my question is, we are currently undertaking some review of our land use plan, are we not? Mr. Johnson?
Through the chair, I believe you might be referring to the municipal development plan review.
Thank you. Are these two things connected? And can you roll them in together? Or do you have, do you expect that they would be two separate things involving a significant amount of staff time?
Through the chair, the most appropriate place for this type of policy and regulation would be the land use bylaw. As I mentioned, we did kind of a side of desk review. That doesn't take a significant amount of time. More in-depth review. I don't see it as being, you know, an extraordinary exercise in terms of manpower or anything.
Thank you. And I have Counselor Bosch.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor O'Toole. For me, the last motion, I voted yes because I don't believe adding one more is a cluster. And to me, that could be a potential concern. I will vote in favor of this motion due to potential clusters and the effects of 5G coming in. So I do understand that, yes, those locations of towers or boosters or whatever they're going to use to transmit will be significantly closer. So but we do also have to keep in mind the federal safety standards are there for a reason. And our administration is not going to go up against federal safety standards if that has been looked into. But for us to find more information at this point, that is available to us in our purview, I'm happy to vote yes on this next one.
Counselor Bressi?
Great, thank you, Chair O'Toole. For the chair, I'll permit, I'd like to make a motion to amend this to strike including any health hazards with this technology. And just speaks this motion to amend. Counselor Thiessen, I certainly appreciate your passion. And I certainly appreciate you sharing sources with council. And I did read what you sent our way. I started with the IAAF study that was referenced. And I will note that the latest source I found in that was 18 years old. And so I did spend time looking for more up-to-date sources. And I found a number, I found a number of good summaries from various reputable health authorities that I do trust and I think we have taken guidance from in the past. And I just don't know what new administration's going to be able to contribute on the health side of things that will actually be trusted and believed more than what's already freely available from our federal government and from other reputable agencies. So I think that task administration spent a lot of time doing this. I don't see the value in it. We've got experts in community planning. We've got experts in land use bylaw. We don't have medical experts on staff. And so I'd encourage us to stick to the scope on this motion of what's actually within municipal authority and municipal expertise and not what's in the purview of other levels of government.
Counselor Berg?
Yeah, thanks. And in a roundabout way, this follows up Counselor Bressi's question. But my question is actually for the city solicitor, Mr. Freeman. In the motion, do you see anything outside the scope that our city could enact? So, you know, we could get all kinds of great advice, but it would be null and void because other levels of government would oversee that and it's outside our purview.
Through the chair, you raise a number of good questions. I think there's an open question as to the extent to which the city could pass bylaws which contradict appropriate health authorities. Nevertheless, the city does have square remit to regulate through its bylaw function, health and safety matters under section seven of the Municipal Government Act. I think there is perhaps an opportunity for jurisdictional scan to look at what other jurisdictions are doing around towers, the best practices, including with regards to the extent to which they defer to other health authorities around some of the specialized regulatory considerations. I share the city manager's concern about specialized health determinations from a city staff which obviously has different functions and different specializations. Furthermore, I just add this for consideration. We've looked at the templates which the city has used in the past. And going forward with the lease, we intend to include provisions which we think will be more favorable with regard to nuisance and other considerations which are somewhat adjacent to some of the considerations that are here today to better protect the city and its residents.
Great, thank you.
Councillor Thiessen?
Yeah, thank you very much, Chairman O'Toole. I guess this, I'm not sure if this is to close, but I would like to just throw in my two cents that there are lots of, I know that there's health studies that were thrown out there, that Canada has the great one, but I know that Canada operates like with our guidelines, in some cases 10 to 100 times less stringently than other country jurisdictions such as Italy, Germany, China, Russia, that's all, that's all available. They take a precautionary method with it, and here in Canada and the United States we don't. So the states, there are certain states that have made extra precautions because of the unknown nature of the technology, in fact, makes our, our land use bylaws and tower, cellphone tower setback look really small in comparison. We're three times the tower height, there are some jurisdictions that won't allow a cellphone tower close to schools within 3,000 feet, which is a pretty fair distance away in, in that regard, and they're based off of health and science of other reputable sources in the United States, as well as Europe and other agencies. So I would hope that part of this review would at least consider that, and I'm, I'm not sure if that was a friendly amendment to strike or if that's perfectly within the allowances, but I do think as we make land use decisions that may impact the health of our residents, that we should at least be aware of any potential concerns or precautions we might have to take.
All right, we did have an amendment, and if you would like, we should probably address that first. You go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Chair O'Toole, for allowing me to, to close, just speak to it. Yeah, I don't think it's friendly, I didn't offer friendly memics, I didn't know if the mover would take, would take that, but just speak to it, Councillor Thiessen, if there's, if there's inclination to do a high-level jurisdictional scan of what other places are, places are doing around with these towers around specialized uses, I'd, I'd be happy to entertain a conversation about, hey, should we do that type of jurisdictional scan? Because I think our staff do have the expertise to go out and say, yeah, this is what other communities are, communities are doing and what we might consider here, but for me to get so specific, I don't think that they can speak to us on the science of should this be 200 meters away or 400 meters away or 300 meters away. I don't think they can speak the science of that, certainly could speak to what other municipalities are doing, and so I'll stand by this, I'll stand by this motion for now, not saying that it's not maybe worth looking at what other jurisdictions are doing too.
Okay. That was your close. We'll move on to the vote. Thank you very much. And go ahead. And that passes unanimously. Oh, carried. Oh, sorry, it was seven to one. Okay, so we'll go back to the main motion and go ahead. As amended. Sure glad the city manager's sitting beside me telling me what to say and what to do. And that passes seven, six to two. Right. Mr. and Mrs. Glad, Councillor Blackmore, there's meeting highlights. Did you want to go over those?
I have a number of meeting highlights, Deputy Mayor O'Toole. Economic Development has quite a number of things to report. The current rural renewal stream updates include 462 candidates endorsed with an additional 27 in the queue. There are 608 employer applications received to date, including 34 in the queue for review, and 255 positions advertised as available. From October 4th to the 13th, we saw seven home-based businesses and nine commercial business licenses being issued, and as part of Small Business Week, administration connected with over 60 small businesses in Grand Prairie and attended events such as Women in Business Lunch, the Chamber Awards of Distinction, and other events with the Small Business Week. A promotional video was also released as part of Small Business Week, and administration attended the Economic Developers of Alberta Ministry Dinner to hear more about what's happening at the federal and provincial government levels impacting economic development in communities. After the expression of interest process for leasing space at the Dave Barr Community Center, a childcare service provider was chosen and lease negotiations are currently underway. That's exciting because that means we'll have more daycare spaces available in the city over the next few months. Three physician recruitment tours took place just in the last couple of weeks, and planning is underway for the 2024 Growing the North Econ, Growing the North Conference that the Chamber hosts. Investment attractions saw a consultant hired to work with the, on the investment attraction plan and pitch book, and initial meetings have been held. And in the realm of events and entertainment, Grand Prairie Storm hosted Hockey Hooky on October 20th with 1,600 students attending the game, thanks to a sponsorship from Control Tech. The Storm are leading the league in attendance and had the largest attendance on opening weekend. Peace Country Invitational, PBR from Burnett Center, will premiere on TSN tomorrow, so you've probably missed that now, and the show is scheduled to run in six time slots with additional reruns throughout the year. And that was a wrap-up of Week at Invest GP.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to item 8.2, Strategy and Communication, and Councillor Thiessen, you're filling in for me tonight. Thank you very much.
Yeah, hopefully I do, do well for you there, Mr. Chair. I would move that council adopt the minutes of the Strategy and Communication Services Committee meeting held October 24th, 2023, as presented.
Motion's in order. There we go. Go ahead and vote, please. And that's carried unanimously. Thank you.
So we've got some business coming out of this, coming out of this meeting, but normally the chair would, would make the motion and we discuss or debate, but with discussion with another councillor earlier, I believe there might be another motion coming up with a referral back to committee, but I'll just give him a second or two to decide if he wants to make that motion before I carry forward.
Yeah, thank you for that, Acting Chair Thiessen. I'd like to move, I'm going to add a piece to this, that we keep the existing policy and council refer to the appropriate standing committee for further discussion, the rest of this motion, please.
Okay, that, that motion is in order, but I'll look over to the chair, I see Councillor Bressi waving his arms up.
Yes, you're right. Councillor Bressi, you want to chime in on this, please?
Great, thank you, Chair O'Toole. I just would note that I don't think we need to make a motion to leave the current policy in place, we just have to make sure we don't move the policy to, to repeal it. I am wondering if Councillor O'Connor might be open to a friendly amendment, if not, I'm happy to move it as a real amendment, but for this to future council committee of the whole. This was spoken at standing, at standing committee already, and I did have some concerns and questions about it, and as a noncommittee member there, really felt that there's, that there wasn't appropriate ability for me as a noncommittee member to give the feedback on this policy that I think probably every councillor wants to give. I think this is a policy that so deeply impacts every single thing we do as council that everybody should be able to fully participate in the conversation, so I'd hope to see this as a council committee of the whole rather than a standing committee.
I would accept that amendment. That is wonderful. Thank you.
Look at that, Mr. Chair, we're taking care of business without being the chairs.
There you go. So there was a motion or amendment? How did you want to do this, Mr. Bressi?
Well, Chair O'Toole, I believe it's Councillor O'Connor's motion that's on the table right now that we could vote on.
Yes, I think we should go ahead and vote on this, and that I think it's an appropriate place to have all of council debate on this particular motion.
Fair enough. Just wanted some clarification, so if you've got that, we will call for the vote. Platt in favor? And that carries unanimously. We'll move on.
Yeah, so thank you very much, Chair O'Toole. That's how a football team gets down the field, by moving the ball between players, right? Good job, team. Thank you very much for that, making my, my work easier even though I got an extra load today. I did some updates from that meeting. MLA Shane Getson had a, was, was involved with their intergovernmental affairs people, they facilitated that meeting and discussion, economic trade corridors, particularly going north and west here from the city of Grand Prairie. Also, administration is preparing for approval of the brand strategy and visual identity refresh, including the creation of engagement and launch strategies that will be presented towards council here fairly soon. The sponsorship campaign has been launched and work is underway on the sale of our GP guide ads, the naming rights in north and south arenas in the Design Works Center, and naming rights in the E-Sync Center Fieldhouse. So if you've got some money and you want your name in lights, it's a good time to pick up the phone and call city administration here, especially through this department. Finally, 98 residents have subscribed to receive information via the city's new text message service on updates, so this will go everywhere from garbage pickup to snow removal to anything that might be happening in your neighborhood. 98 seems like a low number, but we just launched this off, and I'm hoping that for everyone that wants to stay connected to their community, they sign up for this program because I think it's a, an excellent way to, to know without having to go to an extra website, and we take care of all that communication work for you. So sign up today. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your reports. We'll move to item 8.3, Public and Protective Services.
Thank you, Deputy Chair O'Toole. I'd like to move council adopt the minutes of the Public and Protective Services Committee meeting held October 24th, 2023, as presented.
Motion's in order. We will call for the vote. And that carries unanimously, and meeting highlights, please.
Thank you, Acting Deputy Mayor O'Toole. Major projects, substantial completion of the renovation of Fletcher House is expected to be concluded for tenants beginning to move into the building on November 15th, so that's very good news. And the work on the roof replacement at the Coordinated Care Campus is proceeding, and Phase 3 occupancy will take place in late February, or sorry, late January and early February. And look at, there is the International Day for Persons with Disability at December 1st at Teresa Sergeant Hall. Also, the housing and homelessness, the city applied for a $1.3 million grant to help support some of the programs at the Coordinated Care Campus. And enforcement services, we have done vehicle for high full inspections, will be held, held earlier this month, and they looked at driver review credentials, and they're also, I think in the process, correct me if I'm wrong, that they're doing inspection on all the vehicles this month. Am I not correct on that? Yes. I'm getting a yes over there, so they are doing that. RCMP has been reaching out to the community and going to the schools and being well-received, and they, mobile outreach program since January 28th, administration has responded to 82 encampments with 76 being active at the time of response. And the community knowledge campus, the aquatics area, the East Lake Center is officially reopened to the public two weeks ago, and I hear the 25-meter pool is just about ready to open again, waiting health tests, so has it been open? Yeah, it's open, so two thumbs up, people are back. And that's all for my report. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you. It sounds like you guys did a lot of work. Go to 8.4, Operational Services, and I have double-duty Chris Thiessen.
Oh, look at me, I'm so lucky. Thank you very much, Chair O'Toole. I would move that council adopt the minutes of the Operational Services Committee meeting held October 24th, 2023, as presented.
That motion's in order. Call for the vote. All right, it looks like you got a couple things to deal with in business, so go ahead.
Thank you very much, Chair O'Toole. Yeah, just one thing to deal with for right now, that's bylaw C-1467, the Electric Distribution System Franchise Agreement. With that, I'll move that council give first reading to bylaw C-1467, allowing the municipality to enter into an electric distribution system franchise agreement.
Thank you. That motion is in order. We'll call for the vote. And that carries unanimously.
All right, thank you very much for that, Chair O'Toole. I think second and third reading will come to a council meeting near you, but this is just the first step to, to make that agreement something that we can move through and discuss as thoroughly as we may have to. As far as the service area updates, in energy and environment, over 200 people participated in, oh, sorry, so waited in line for the doors to open. Wow, I should read the whole sentence before I present. Waited, 200 people waited in lines before the door to open for our, our swap, our big Grand Prairie drop-in swap. Approximately 10,000 pounds of clothing were distributed and swapped between people, and actually between over 400 people over four hours, which was a substantial increase over the past years. Big thank you went out at, at committee meetings to councillors Kevin O'Toole and councillor Wade Platt for all the heavy lifting that they did in moving those big clothing bags, so thank you very much, gentlemen. The aquatic shutdown is soon to be over completely here as of November 6th. We will have the 25-meter pool fully open, operational, and ready to go, unless I missed something, I'm getting a look from our CEO. I did, yeah, we just talked about that, didn't we? All right. Well, it says it here, I'm just, I highlighted, I thought it was a good point.
Deja vu.
As far as transit goes, our late-night service is seeing consistent growth week over week, which is a good sign, considering that that was a big demand item from our residents, asking for more options with late-night transit, and I think administration is delivering there, and may come to a budget request sooner or later if we keep seeing that type of growth. Finally, streetlight update, Michelle Gardner, our Director of Energy and Environment, presented committee with information that was requested regarding streetlights and how we could dim them and perhaps reduce the, the amount of energy that we lose through our streetlights based on when they age out. Off of the report, we indicated that 5% of our lights are close to 20 years of age or older, and the average lifespan of a streetlight is 25 years, but Atco stated to us that they only repair on an as-needed basis, and sometimes it's 10 years and sometimes it's 30 years, but they make sure that they're on top of that. Finally, we also got a report on the Avondale High School sites, ARP site servicing, and 105th Street cost estimates, which was requesting that we have some more information coming back to council in regards to an engineering report from consultants that will be discussed during budget. This is in regards to the 105th Street and 116th Avenue connector. One interesting thing to note, as there's been lots of discussion around recreation facilities and the soccer dome potentially going in that area, is that these upgrades would not impact the, the building of said soccer dome if it were to go there. With that, that's my report. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much. We have no items of correspondence, we've got delegation business, we had one delegate that come today, does anybody want to deal with that? Go ahead. Thank you, Mr. Bressi.
Yeah, thank you, Chair O'Toole. I don't have a motion for it, but I do appreciate the delegation had to follow rules of decorum and so couldn't name a member of council individually, but we all know the delegate was talking about me, and so I, since a direct request has been made to me individually today, I do feel the need to address it. There is a code of conduct process and a RECO process available to residents if they feel I've breached my duty. I certainly welcome these systems of democratic accountability. I'm also always happy to meet residents for coffee if they wish to talk more. However, I will say now that the reason I ran for office is to be part of building a safe and welcoming community for all people, especially for those who might be struggling because they've been left out, suffered discrimination, or face big risk factors. My post on September 19th simply acknowledged the experiences of some residents and what they were feeling. It is absolutely- It is absolutely indisputable that there are members of our 2S LGBTQ community who feel under increasing attack and were particularly hurt by the event referenced. We know this. Just two meetings ago, one young resident came to publicly share her experiences. I know all of council has received communication of similar stories from additional members of our community, and I've had too many hard conversations with parents who are worried sick about the treatment their publicly-out kids are experiencing. These residents are feeling growing pressure because of louder and louder untruths and abuse that is being thrown their way. I've seen some of this harassment happening with my own eyes, and have directly experienced a small measure of it myself. So I know it is happening, and it absolutely breaks my heart, especially when I see how some of our young people are impacted. So I stand by this very clear message to our 2S LGBTQ community residents. You are welcome here in Grand Prairie. You deserve to be safe, and your rights matter. Thank you, Chair O'Toole, for allowing me to address that.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. So I'm looking for direction on 10.1. Is there any business to look after? Ladies and gentlemen, I see none, so we'll move on. We have no notices of motion. We have no recess today. Unfinished business, public hearings, delegation business we've dealt with, council member reports. And we'll start with councillor Blackmore, and we'll go around the table this way.
Well, thank you, Deputy Mayor O'Toole. I've never, ever got to start roundtable before. I'm going to talk forever.
Yeah.
On October 18th, well, as many people know, I am a volunteer on Peace Health Advisory Council, and while away from the city, I became vice-chair of the Peace Health Advisory Council. I don't have any idea what that means. Hopefully, it doesn't change my life significantly, but that's where we are with that. On October 18th, I did attend a Zoom meeting that was hosted by Alberta Health Services. The two speakers were Moro Chees, who is CEO and President of Alberta Health Services, and Dr. John Cowell, who's the sole administrator of Alberta Health Services. And they talked through a number of provincial issues that affect all of us who need healthcare, which means absolutely everybody on the planet, I think. And a few of the changes that have been happening at AHS, one of them is the fact that they will be having these public town hall-type meetings once a quarter. And I think that for the CEO and the sole administrator to set time aside in their work, daily work to attend a 6:00 PM Zoom meeting is indicative of the change that AHS is trying to implement. Nevertheless, they are a huge organization, and we all know the saying about turning a ship at sea can take a really long time. So I'm hopeful that we're going to see some changes there. They did confirm that they have no control or really even any input over primary care, which means our doctors. Even though doctors work in AHS facilities, AHS has really no control over what happens with doctors and does very little about keeping them happy. So that's one of those fractures that take place when there's too much government and not enough, not enough thought put into process, where process becomes the tool rather than, becomes a weapon rather than the tool. He did mention that, as some people will already know, Addictions and Mental Health has moved into their own ministry with Minister Dan Williams. So it is now separate from AHS, and what that really means is now Dr. Cowell and Mr. Chees have two different bosses to report to, and they need to figure out how to report to them equally and make that process seamless. The other thing they mentioned was they're moving away from centralized decision-making and to a regional decision-making mandate. So you will see over the next few months as COVID becomes an issue, as it will probably every fall for years to come. When hospitals see a spike in COVID or other transmittable diseases, you may be requested to wear a mask in that facility, but it's not a mandate coming from the top level of AHS any longer. It's on an as-needed basis, hospital to hospital. Moving on to the Downtown Association, there were over 700 participants in the Halloween party that took place on Saturday night. That's a collaboration between the Downtown Association and the city of Grand Prairie, and it's a way for children to really enjoy Halloween in a safe and a safe environment that their parents can take part in and be there with them and know that everything is going to work well for them. As Christmas is coming, I wanted to talk for a few minutes about the Downtown Association gift card. So I have to pull this up on my phone because I'm so amazed that I got to talk first. I'm really not prepared. So the Downtown Association gift card supports all of the small businesses in the downtown area, and you use it like a debit card, including being able to use it to split transactions. And it has no expiry fee, as that would be illegal in Alberta. They make great corporate gifts, gifts for colleagues, clients, families, and friends, and they're great for purchases that are practical, like dry cleaning, groceries, fuel, counseling, Pilates. You can buy experiences with them, such as GP Live Theatre, Centre for Creative Arts, simulator golfing, and for a number of health and wellness things like tattoos, nails, hair salons, botox and skincare, and of course, luxury purchases and retail. So there's something for everyone there. For those businesses out there who do choose to purchase a gift for their employees at Christmas time, I have to say that I think it's a wonderful idea for them to think about using a downtown gift card because they don't need to make decisions about where their employees and spend their money. And to get those cards, you can go online to GP Downtown, I just closed this, now I forgot, dot com, gpdowntown.com, or of course, you can go to the Downtown Association and buy them in person. So I hope I talked long enough that no one else like Mr. Thiessen gets a chance.
All right. Councillor Platt.
Thanks, Chair O'Toole. I didn't time you, but I do think you were up there in the same timeline as councillor Thiessen. Incredibly busy last couple of weeks, so I apologize for glossing over on some of them, but I do want to just highlight a couple of events. We had a great minister meeting with MLA Getson on our economic corridors and potential that, and it's encouraging to hear that we might not be landlocked forever in Alberta. So it was good. Had an economic development committee meeting, had an intercollaborative committee meeting, had a discussion with some developers around some multifamily projects and hopefully getting some doors in our community. Attended the Dewali Festival, attended the Police Commission Engagement Session, attended the Invest GP Mixer with our financial and real estate sectors. Had a Nighthawk Board Meeting to talk about long-term planning and what the Hill looks like 20 years from now and starting a dream, which was a lot of fun. But the two highlights, I think, for the ones that I had were the annual drop and swap, as councillor Thiessen had mentioned. I really want to encourage everybody to remind themselves that when you go through your closets, there's things that are in there that if you're not using, there will be people that would love to have them. And it was very apparent when councillor O'Toole and I were there, seeing families come in and taking away bags and bags and bags of clothes that probably sat in somebody else's bottom of their closet for a period of time before they decided to spring clean. So I realize it's an ongoing thing, but I do want to encourage people to take that time and go through your stuff at home. If it's something you're not using currently, there are people that would love to have that, and so I just encourage us all to do a good locker check on our own homes. Lastly, I got to attend a Parks and Rec, Alberta Parks and Recreation Conference for four days with a couple of colleagues. And some of the big takeaways I had from there, we had a really good session, and it was done really well in that they interviewed some inmates in a prison that got two hours a day of outside time, and they asked them what they would feel like if they only had an hour of time. And of course, the responses were not very good. And then we reminded them that's what the average child has, is one hour a day outside. That's what our average child in our communities lives with, is about an hour of outside time a day. I questioned that a lot as I was doing lots of walking and hiking at night, and I think they're very accurate with that. We're heading into that season right now where I'm a very outdoor person, it's hard to be outside for an hour time in the winter time here in our, and so encourage you all to check out Iceland and some of the things they're doing in that country, because I think we have a lot of learning to do from Iceland as well. Planet Youth had a really, really great slide coming up, and it does speak to some of the things about how things are generational, thinking about when I was a youth and some of the things we did on our weekends and evenings versus what kids do now. And so over a 20-year period, 42% of kids then drank in the past 32 days, past 30 days, 5% do now. 23% smoke daily, now it's 1%. 17% had a lifetime cannabis use, these are youth, now it's 7%. So the only thing they didn't have stats on was vaping, but it was a good eye-opener that our youth, as much as sometimes as a parent I get frustrated with them, I do think there are trending and healthier aspects that we don't necessarily give them credit for. We see that in our lounges in Grand Prairie not being as busy, there's not like clubs like they once were. People wonder why? Pardon me? Well, I just, I guess for me, it's a good eye-opener knowing, I think a lot of times we want things to happen quickly, just like truth and reconciliation, other things we do. It does happen over time, and I think those stats were great to highlight just the movements our youth are making in a healthier direction. So it was a great conference overall, and I encourage again, everybody to check out some things that Iceland's doing.
All right, thank you very much. Councillor Berg.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So I got up nice and early this morning and attended the Breakfast with the Guys. I think I've been there about six or seven times now, and it's something I always make a priority. I do not enjoy waking up at 6 o'clock in the morning and getting out of the house, but this is one event that I do find worthwhile in getting out and supporting, and I believe it's sponsored by Odyssey House. And I do have to give a shout-out to the St. Joe's football team. They are there every year, and Breakfast with the Guys is just kind of to show leadership and mentorship for young men in the city and different connections that they can make. And so it's just something that I do enjoy going in. They've always got excellent speakers, including this year, and they've already announced next year's speaker. So again, they're planning ahead and they know what their mission is, so I encourage people to keep this event on their radar and let's help grow it. I attended a Invest GP Mixer. I did get there late because I was running my own business, but it was good to see a great turnout of Realtors and investors, and I believe we've had about four or five of these so far. So if your industry has not been invited yet, I suggest you reach out to the Invest GP Group and suggest your industry for one of these events. A Peace Library System, only thing around there, they haven't had an increase since about 2018, 2019, pre-COVID, but their cost of delivering their services. So the Peace Library System, basically, it's a book-sharing network across the entire Peace region up to the Northwest Territories border, so there's a lot of transportation as the central hub is located here in Grand Prairie. So if you're in High Level or Rainbow Lake and there's a book that you want to see, you can have access to it. So there is a cost to that, and so city council, we may be getting a budget request from them of a slight increase. Attended the St. Pat's School Ribbon Cutting. That was beautiful, another beautiful school. As we all know, the old one was tore down, and in its place, a brand-new school. So it was great to be there, and just congratulations to the Catholic School Board on that. We had a CLT Council Police Commission meeting that all of us attended, an engagement session. I attended the Northwestern Polytechnic President's Ball. That event I hadn't been to for a few years. Beautiful event, lots of warm fuzzies, so congratulations to the team at Northwestern Polytechnic. That was a busy night. I believe there were four events that night across the city, and so different councillors were spread throughout. And then a big thank you to councillor O'Connor. We had a GP prep meeting that I was unable to attend in person. I wanted to join in Zoom. Zoom was not offered, so councillor O'Connor put me on the phone so I could tune in and listen, so I'll leave the details to him as he was there. So thank you, councillor O'Connor, and thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you very much. And councillor O'Connor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor O'Toole. Attended Economic Development Committee meeting, the Regional Emergency Management Committee meeting, and we went over the review of what happened for the fires, and there was kudos sent out to staff, and one of our staff won a national award. And so I think the work that we're doing on GP prep is setting a precedent that other cities are looking to adopt. So I'm very, very proud of this committee, and kudos to Chief Lemieux. Thanks for all your input on that. You're a great leader. I attended the Urban Forest and Stormwater Public Engagement Event, attended the Chamber of Commerce Awards of Distinction, went to the Scarecrow Festival, went to the Northwest Polytech President's Ball, and I echo councillor Berg's comment. It's a wonderful event and really warms us to see all the students that are taking advantage of being part of Northwest Polytech. Went to St. Patrick's School opening, went to the Sports Connection, sponsorship appreciation and rebrand, and they're headed in the right direction. Do you know that you can go on there and register whatever group that is in there, and they will have you up there? They'll get your contact information. So if you're not on Sport Connect, you should be. Attended the Invest GP Real Estate and Finance Mixer, over 80-plus people were there, and went out to height, to the Clear Heels Youth Treatment Opening. What a tremendous movement. Councillor Thiessen brought greetings and spoke off the cuff. I was very, very impressed at how well you handled yourself. And also went to Breakfast with the Guys, very motivational and appreciated. So that's the end of my report. Thank you.
Would you like to be next, councillor Bosch?
Thank you, Chair O'Toole. I will start with the Storm Board Meeting I attended, and that I just have to give a comment to the winning streak that they're on. It's fabulous. We love seeing that. Hopefully, I'm going to knock on wood wherever it stays that way. Congratulations to the Storm for the highest number of participants in attendance in the AJHL. So that's fantastic, huge amount of teams out there and in competition with attendance. They are sitting currently at the top half of the standings, so good to hear that. And, you know, congratulations to them on some of their new events like Hockey Hooky and the Tiny Whitey Toss. So all of these fun things to get out there, it's not an expensive night out in comparison to, you know, going out to the, you know, I don't want to name anybody because somebody's going to get mad, so, but it's not too expensive to go to a Storm game. I attended the Women in Business Luncheon for Small Business Week. That was a great event. Next was the Sport Connection Board Meeting, and in that, we, I can mention a couple of things here. They just finished wrapping up the National Coaches Week, 11 nominations, and the winner was Brad Carey with the GP Minor Baseball Association, who also won a $100 gift card from Canadian Tire. Sponsorship appreciation and relaunch brand planning and event that councillor O'Connor mentioned, that was a great event that we attended, showcasing what they have to offer, and particularly, I think what you were trying to get at, councillor O'Connor is now looking online by date for, where do I have it here? By registration date. So maybe you're not sure the sport, but it's the time of year to get your kids into something. So by the end of October, by the end of November, what is available to get your kids into for sports and rec? And then first call out to the sports groups to participate in the Winter Tryout Day, and that is scheduled for January 27th. Next, I went to the Grand Prairie Local Immigration Partnership Meeting. There was a lot to talk about there as well, particularly a survey that just went out. So the Grand Prairie Immigration Survey, that went out to approximately 10,000 people. We have about 10,000 immigrants in Grand Prairie, and the response back was about 8%, which isn't And the response back was about 8%, which isn't bad. It's about 700, which is higher than most surveys in return and about 1% of our population base. So they're just going through all the details of what that survey says. That survey was sent in 25 different languages. So incredibly impressive how they put this survey out to the to our community members. There is 27 partners in the Grand Prairie Local Immigration Partnership that all work together to make our new members of our community feel valued, safe, have somewhere to work and somewhere to live. And they just had a motion to present to our council once a year. So we'll look forward to their their synopsis of their year. I think all of us are looking forward to something like that because we don't know enough about it. And then their immigration advisory table has approximately nine new members, which is really, really nice. And that includes the inclusion of their family coming to those those meetings. So that was really good. What else can I tell you? Attended the Rotary Business Lunch for Small Business Week and met with a new potential doctor for doctor recruitment. I attended the Scarecrow Festival for Rotary. Then later that night, the Dewali Celebration with the East Indian Cultural Association. The four nights, the four events that night, I was happy to make two of them. I can't can't spread ourselves too thin to four. And then there's planning with the Christmas Tree Lighting and Event coming soon. That will include the hockey game, the Battle of the Badges between the firefighters and the RCMP. The firefighters seem to, the last two years, win. Well, we'll see. There's, we'll see. They have intentions of changing that that winning streak, but we'll see what happens. And then, of course, the Grand Prairie Police Commission Engagement with Chief Lacusta. And then I also attended the Alberta Recs and Parks Conference. That was really good. There's some trends. I'll just speak to a couple of things. Councillor Palat spoke to some already. There is an Alberta Recreation Survey that has just just come out. It was, its release was announced at this conference. And a couple of the trends are that 86% of the participants in the survey enjoy and use the parks systems. Bird watching and gardening is a trend, particularly after during COVID, but continuing. They said the provincial parks are accessible for people who make 60,000 or less. And that was a concern just with the cost of going to the parks if if people are accessing accessing them depending on their financial ability. Another trend was pickleball being number one right now. Sorry councillor Bressi, nothing on your sport, disc golf. It's coming.
It's outdated now.
Another trend that we're looking at, and I think perhaps it'd be something good for for us to use here. With with the typical cost of a child in sport being at $1,500 per person per year. They're talking about lending libraries for recreation equipment, just because that is a barrier for for some parents for getting their children into sport. Other trends were crafts, walking, TV, they even included TV in that in that. And during the pandemic, that increased, but has seemingly to continue. They talked about accessibility. Those who participated in the survey said 32% were completely satisfied with accessibility. But about 60% said it was okay. So we do need some work on that. Soccer is the highest growing sport in Canada and globally. Right now in Canada, 1 million soccer players to 600,000 hockey players. So that was very interesting. And, you know, some of that is due to the cost to getting into sports like that. There's a ton more that we learnt and it was it was a great conference to go to. And then last, I'll just make a comment over the weekend, the Halloween Walking Parade and Spooktacular that the Grand Prairie Downtown Association and the City of Grand Prairie collaborated together in in putting on. Special thank you to Stacy Bat and Dylan, Jesse Wilder and Guest Services, who helped out on Saturday. I'd like to thank the RCMP Enforcement Services Public Security Unit for keeping our kids and on the straight and narrow. You know, only go for candy and carefully walk across the streets. Councillor Thiessen for being there, for being my eyes and ears on Saturday. Snapshot Studio, she always does a great job giving people portraits, little pictures of the day. Star Wars, our very own Star Wars troupe from Grand Prairie was there, so that was awesome. And the, all the businesses who gave candy to all these, all these children. Over 700 participants this year. There was a lot of candy given. And I can tell you, I guess we need more hot dogs for next year. So it was, it was a great event, so that'll only build. And that's my report.
Thank you very much councillor Bressi. It's your turn.
Great, thank you Chair O'Toole. I'm glad to hear about Battle of the Badges coming up. I am looking forward to one of the last years that FIRE will win because I know Chief Lacusta has big plans for his team in coming years. So FIRE, their heydays are coming to an end. Let's enjoy them while we can. A few, I got to go to a number of these things, things mentioned, although I was also away for Alberta municipalities meetings. And I did my first three days of my ICD training. So that was an interesting three days getting to learn about better governance. Looking forward to bringing some of those lessons learnt to this table. The police engagement, the police commission did a series of public engagements. They were World Cafe styled, so you came to a table and you sat around and discussed a question with a commission member or the chief. And then you rotated to another table to share questions. And we had over 140 members of the public came and participated in that. And those were 140 members that sat down and gave a couple hours of their time to really share their vision of what the future of policing should look like and could look like in this community. So really appreciate it. And then I know that the commission's view is that that was the start of conversations with the community, between commission and the community, not a checkbox where we're checking off to say we did that. So I'm looking forward to us being able to take what we heard and start applying it as we build our strategic plan as a as a commission. I, as I mentioned, I did get to spend a couple of days in Edmonton doing Alberta municipalities meetings. We did our committee appointments and I'm glad that I get to stay on the Audit Finance Committee. I get to continue chairing that. I get to continue on the Alberta Municipal Service Corporation Board. Two new ones for me is I get to chair the Infrastructure Committee. And I'm going to be the appointee to the Alert Civilian Advisory Committee. So looking forward to some of that new work. And I also want to say a big congratulations and a thank you to Mayor Clayton, who will be on the Economic Strategy Committee. And to Mr. Toronto, who will be on the Municipal Governance Committee. So thank you for those two for contributing their time and their expertise as well. The highlight of my time in Edmonton, though, was our board got to meet with the Rural Health Professionals Attraction Plan Board. RHR, they've got a little green silo on their logo, but kind of a mouthful when you try to say it all together. But this group of doctors, there's doctors on their board, there's municipal officials on the board, there's other healthcare practitioners as community members on the board that are figuring out how do I attract healthcare professionals to the smaller communities, 10,000 or less that are outside the Calgary, Edmonton region? It was a very interesting conversation, even though that group's not technically focused on a city the size of Grand Prairie. I think there's a lot of benefit to us for them being successful. If the towns around us can attract physicians, then that means their residents don't have to come in here. So there's also more physicians for our residents. I also think there's a lot that's going on to attract physicians to rural areas that are good lessons learned for us. And it gave me a lot of comfort that although I know there's work to do, as we're talking about our physician attraction strategy, listening to the physicians on that board talk about what they think young practitioners need, such as experiences to enjoy the quality of life in community, good mentorship, connection to business services. They don't have to worry about being business people as well as being new doctors. Some really good ideas there, but I also think we're actually in a lot of them. So that was good for me to hear. So I really appreciated that evening.
Councillor Thiessen.
Thank you very much Deputy Mayor O'Toole. I've been sitting here patiently watching all these Chris Thiessen reports go around the table and I love it. I love it. Thank you. I've been taking notes in my head and everywhere else. So I think, yeah, this type of, this type of elucidation is good for all of us. I'll just start with my committees and most of the, most of the events that I attended were spoken of. I will highlight a couple of them as I go down the list. But first things first, on October 19th, I had a meeting with the Community Advisory Board on Housing and Homelessness, where we received a presentation from Mobile Outreach, as well as, well, presentations from the province, from the Reaching Home Federal Agents, as well as other members there. We discussed membership of the CAB. And somewhere along the line, I think I put my hand up to review some of the applications for for a CAB membership. And so later on, earlier last week, I went over that with several members of the committee and narrowed down some of the scope and talked about how we might be able to improve CAB and increase our membership and attendance as well. Because, you know, you do something for three or four years and sometimes your attendance slips because you're, well, I've done this before. But we're looking to generate new ideas and good ideas to come forward to council in regards to housing. So, you know, that we can apply them to our community as well. So I look forward to the new members coming on. Those recommendations will be coming forward to council, I believe, once all the interviews are done. Also, on October 27th, had a meeting of the Grand Spirit Foundation. This is going to be the bulk of my my roundtable here today because there's lots of business that we we took care of at this meeting in Spirit River. Starting off first, first and foremost, I'll start with the bad news first is, is as some of you are aware of, I've been sitting on the Finance Committee for the last few months. We've had about a dozen to, you know, 15 hours of meetings to try to find the right course of action for Grand Spirit Foundation to take as far as the rising costs to do business nowadays with inflation and stuff. I don't understand inflation. The bank Canada says we're at 8.5%, but my grocery bill's up 45%. So I'm not sure. My electricity bill's up 30%. So I don't know how they calculate that, but it definitely has an impact on the bottom line of organizations such as Grand Spirit Foundation. And with that, the board was made aware that we are currently sitting at a $3.894 million deficit between all of our housing management body, all the lodges that are contained in there. That's just the cost of doing business status quo. That's how much things have gone up. So this would have represented if we were going to use some of our operational reserves, which we weren't fully comfortable with. We weren't comfortable with raising the rents. So there was a decision that was struck and the Finance Committee had to find a way to find a good balance between using municipal requisitions and or raising the rents and or cutting while we're trying to grow as a foundation. The direction that we took as a Finance Committee and presented to the Grand Spirit Foundation Board was to be minimal raises in the rent to all of our income earners at the different lodges, nothing that would break their bank. And the rest we dealt to municipal requisitions. There was discussion to keep it at the 33%, maybe 40% and phase it in. I was pretty strong armed on it. And when you realize that we we brought to the board an 83% increase to our municipal requisitions. Now, it sounds like a lot, but what this will do is, one, it'll help us take care of our deficit for this year. And also the strategy is to to build around amortization, which we never actually budgeted before. We didn't have the depreciation of our assets, which you'd think we should have. But when you consider municipalities weren't even doing asset management strategies up until a few years ago. Now we're stepping into that arena as well. So in order to create that, we now have policies to create around it. But we thought it would be wise and prudent to hit everybody with a big increase now so we don't have to do that year over year over year. So to the average household, that would mean with this increase, that actually was unanimously approved at the board, which is great news. They were very complimentary on on the plan that we put forward. It represents $30 total a year that the average tax homeowner would pay in order for Grand Spirit Foundation to balance their books. So that's spread out between the regions and the municipalities. And obviously, city taxpayers pick up a bit of that. But when you consider that municipal taxes are probably the best deal going, if any deal that's ever offered, this is a pretty darn good deal too for $30 a year to ensure that seniors are well fed, well taken care of and have a roof over their head and that we can continue to build more houses for them going forward. So we're happy to get the type of support that we did around the board. And we're prepared to defend our decision if we are challenged in the public or by our councils. We also signed on to the AMSC, Alberta Munis Electricity Distribution Contract. There was a bit of a discussion about looking at other options. We did do our due diligence and looked into other options, especially when the energy provider service contract fell through temporarily before Alberta Munis and AMSC were able to pick up a new distributor. Still with the same great rates that we're used to, we couldn't find one that matched it. So we signed on for the term agreement and we're really happy to do business with Alberta Munis and to have that energy contract in place. We also, part of the requisition was setting our lodge budget, but we also set the resident rate sheet, which is great. That's all we did was a simple adjustment to evictions, you know, just making sure that we cover our costs as $75 to the person getting evicted for all incidentals. And we did our administration rate sheet as well, just updating it to the common standards with mileage and other stuff like that. So, yeah, so I'm prepared to answer any questions if there are any from people in regards to that. But, yeah, we feel very confident that we're setting Grand Spirit Foundation on a path towards sustainability. Oh, I guess I should tell you the good news too. We also received a huge grant from CMHC that is pretty uncommon. Grand Spirit seems to be one of the few housing management body organizations that got it. It's about worth $10 million of capital maintenance and replacement and renewal around energy efficiency. It can be backdated two years for any projects that we did two years prior and can go forward to at least three more years from now, two years for sure. About a year extension is also included in the contract. CMHC will cover 40% of all of our capital maintenance and replacement costs as long as we can cover 60%. Of course, that matching goes in the history and goes in the future. It is also stackable. So if we get any grants for capital maintenance and renewal from the province, we can stack that on top of that and work that against that 60/40. So it's a pretty nice little grant setup that we that we have established, that we just signed off on today. Our good news with that is, is the province sent us a letter right after our meeting. I received an email that said that our capital maintenance and renewal has been topped up for this year for $250,000. So that's another $250,000 that Grand Spirit doesn't have to find to work in order to meet this grant. So a lot of good news coming our way. I hope to provide more good news for everybody in the future. But as far as events, yes, I attended my first ever President's Ball. I did the Harvest Stein and Dance. I led the Halloween Parade for the kids. And like a good politician, I handed out envelopes full of money to the winners of the costume contest. That was a joke. Sorry, no one's laughing. I am inside though. I also had the honor and privilege of being able to give greetings on behalf of Mayor Clayton at the Clear Hills Youth Treatment Center, which honestly, I couldn't have got there without councillor O'Connor. So thank you so much, my brakes were grinding. It wasn't safe to drive. You went out of your way to pick me up and ensure that I was able to deliver those greetings, even though that wasn't the plan to begin with. It ended up being a good plan in the end. And such a great facility too. Like we've been advocating for the how underserved the North has been with treatment beds for decades. And so I know how Chief Ramona Horstman had fought for this, to get over all the, all the red tape and all the finish lines that she needed to. And this is going to be a great place for First Nations youth who are experiencing issues with addictions, homelessness or otherwise, to find a clear path towards rehabilitation and maybe their own personal reconciliation by being taught the same cultural practices and integrating back into their culture as well as their language and everything else that comes with that, like so that they feel united and whole as part of their community again. So such a great offering for a region. Thanks for your confidence councillor O'Connor. But again, I couldn't have done it or even been there without you. That's all I got.
All right, I guess I'll finish off the roundtable. I did a lot of things this year or this last couple of weeks with council. I did attend the Alberta Bilingual Municipalities Association Members Meeting. And we also attended the Budget Check-In with council and CLT. And so we kind of have an idea where things are going to be in another couple of weeks. The meeting that we had with Mayor M.L.A. Getson, I felt really positive after that meeting. There's some, he's very innovative and he's got other people's partners along the corridor of Canada. So we can make Grand Prairie and Alberta not so landlocked. On the 18th, Alberta Winter Games Food Committee, we're getting ready for that. And I know it's still a couple of months away, but it's it's happening and it's happening fast. International Day of Peoples with Disabilities, we had a committee there. If you know anybody that has done outstanding work to support people with disabilities. to support people with disabilities or has done above and beyond, send your recommendation in for a possible award for them. Also, I attended the 2023 Chamber Awards of Distinction. And congratulations to all the winners, as well as those that were nominated. I didn't think there was any, don't want to say a non-winner, but I think they all won in their practice that they do, the skill set, the ability to serve the people. So thank you. And the City's Annual Drop and Swap. I got to thank Counselor Palott for standing there and helping people get bags to stuff their clothes in. And I'll be honest with you, it was tear-jerking to see some people that could have never been able to afford the clothes that they got, and they got them for free. And some people left so excited and so thrilled and so thankful that they got to put clothes on their children of three children, their husband and themselves. So I think this is a great event, continued event. And not only that, we don't have 10,000 pounds going into our landfill. Met with CLT and council with the Grand Prairie Police and Chief of Police Engagement with Dwayne Lacusta. East Link Holiday Message we did right after Standing Committees, the Invest GP Mixer. Most of these have been covered. I do want to talk about the Decoy Hub Community Project. We're not that far away from fulfilling the obligation of coming up with enough money to rebuild the decoy armories. And with that, we are having an international air show, as well as the static show, as well as a car show in the end of July. And that will be, it's a huge event for the Rotary Club that sponsored that. And so mark your calendars at the end of July. I'll come up with a date for you here in the near future. But it's going to be pretty interesting. I was given the opportunity to present and receive the first poppy for the city. And after that, then all the little bins go out. So there's number one right there. Breakfast with the guys, once again. I don't think I've missed hardly any of those over the years. And I attended the Grand Spirit Foundation Harvest, Dine and Dance. Once again, it's a very, very well-run dine and dance. And there was a lot of people happy with winning door prizes and stuff like that. And so there was some money. Did you get a balance on that, Mr. Thiessen, on how successful that was? Okay. Still counting the money. That's a good sign. I attended the Ryan Wagner Memorial Award, and the recipients were the St. Catarre Catholic School. And if you don't know what this is all about, it's kids helping kids. They're playing sports. They're generating some money. And so over the last, I think, 15 years, 18 years, $1.6 million for critically sick children. And Ryan was one of those kids that I got to work with him at the Dinosaur Museum. And his, you'd never know he was a sick kid. And with that, we had the St. Pat's Grand Opening and Sports Connection. I just want to end the meeting here by thanking all the staff and administration for being, helping us look good and getting us the connections that we need to continue on working hard to serve with the city. So thank you. Adjourned.